Okay, well, good evening. And this is, I'm calling to order the city council meeting for today, Monday, December 21st. And I ask Madam Clerk to take roll call, please.
Yes, roll call, and if you could state the city, state and county in which you're remotely logging into this meeting. Mayor Garrett.
Present, calling or logging in from Oakland County, Lathir Village, Michigan.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here, calling in from Lathir Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present, Oakland County, Lathir Village, Michigan.
Councilmember Siddiqui. And Councilmember Stallings.
Just having difficulty signing in.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. I invite everyone that's on the call to say the Pledge of Allegiance. You don't have a flag, I don't see. Just kidding, go ahead. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I usually mute myself, but I'm not the person that's, when I'm not running the meetings, I guess that it makes sense this time, so sorry. Can I have someone to excuse Councilman Siddiqui? Did he call in, or anyone know what the?
No.
Okay, well, if anybody wants to make a motion to excuse him. Hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to excuse Councilman Siddiqui.
Have a second. Hearing none, that motion fails. Moving on for the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved and supported. Any discretion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carry for approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Next would be for the consent agenda, and all the items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and not controversial by the city council, and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after the consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. I have a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. I felt something under my chair to realize there was a dog in here, so, sorry. Uh, next is the consideration of approval of monthly dispersment reports for the month of November 2020. This motion to approve dispersment for the month of November 2020, this reflects expenditures from the general fund, which includes police and fire services, recreation department, major roads, local roads, water and sewer services, and from the downtown development authority.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the monthly dispersment reports for November of 2020 for a total of $466,434,045, comprised of 207, approximately $271,000 from the general fund, $2,200 from the major road fund, approximately $4,300 from the local road fund, approximately $13,500 from the downtown development authority, and approximately $175,000 from the water and sewer fund.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all, roll call, please, Monday, I'll remember.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. Next will be the consideration of the acceptance of the departmental reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the departmental reports.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations. Next will be for public comment for any items that's on the agenda, and we are, that the speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone that would like to speak from the public?
No hand raised.
Okay, thank you. We don't have, we don't have a public hearing, so we'll move into the action requests. What's up for consideration for approval is the special assessment resolution number one to set a public hearing for January 25th, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You receive this each year as for the delinquent water and other bills such as nuisance cuts that are eligible to be placed on the property tax rolls. The property owners have until April to pay the amounts that are indicated in the tax listing. And there will be a resolution that sets the public hearing date for January 25th at 7:00 PM.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and set the public hearing for special assessments for January 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Pam, what's the, what's, I was just curious what the total dollar amount was. It wasn't on the spreadsheet that was attached. Do you know, do you know what the total is?
I can pull it up and I'll get back with you on that.
Okay.
It was $296,443. It's on page 78.
Yep.
Thank you, Scott.
It's right at the bottom there. 296,44361.
Oh, it's on the separate page.
My, my, my page 78 is blank, that's why I didn't have it.
Okay.
Interesting, okay. Cheryl, that's twice you got me this time.
Oh, blame it on the copier.
Um, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next will be the action request, be accept the infrastructure study group recommendation and approve the 2021 capital improvement bond proposal.
All right, I can, I can introduce this one, Cheryl.
Okay, let's begin from page 79 of your packet.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, so, um, you know, as everybody knows, we recently approved the, uh, the road improvement bond, which freed up time for the infrastructure study group to begin looking at, at a variety of other infrastructure needs in the city. And as anyone who lives here knows, we've got aging infrastructure. We have a long time deferred maintenance of some of our infrastructure systems. And we also have a variety of state mandated requirements that we, we need to meet, all of which are kind of coming to a head around the same time. And as such, the infrastructure committee is, is putting forth a recommendation today for acceptance and approval of, of our recommendation for a capital improvement bond to work on a lot of these, these various issues. And without going into a ton of detail, I think, I think what we'll probably do is, is have a, uh, town hall meeting sometime in the near future to inform residents of, of the details. But, but basically, the, the systems that we're, we're looking at, at working on are, first off, we're required by the state to identify the material in, in all the homes for the, for the water leads, the service, service lines into, into the homes within five years. And that's a project that requires digging a five-foot hole in, in the ground, rather expensive project to identify via site the materials that, that go into the, into the home. We've, we've estimated about $1.1 million to, to do that project. And then in any instances where we do identify lead, the city is responsible at our cost to replace those lead lines at roughly about $4,500 to $5,000 per, per line. And we've, we've estimated, it's, it's real difficult to estimate that, but we've estimated about a half a million dollars for, for, for that work. As we've discussed in, in prior meetings, the city experiences about 40% water loss, meaning that when we buy our water from Soqua, 40% of that, you know, we pay for 100% of it, 40% of that never gets billed to residents because we're losing that water. And we feel pretty strongly that the loss is due to the aging meters that we have, which are under reporting. And so we're looking at a project for about $860,000 of replacing all the water meters and the water meter infrastructure in, in, in the city. Sewer repairs, we've got about, about $480,000 budgeted for sewer repairs over the next, next few years. Water main replacements, the best time, well, let me step back. We just finished the Santa Barbara project, replacing about one mile of, of our 32, 36 miles of water main. I can't remember the exact number. And 17 miles of that was put in around 1920 with a 50-year expected life. So the water mains are, are very old, which explains why we get, have so many water main breaks in the city. And we're working on replacing those water mains. We've already, like you said, done a mile of Santa Barbara in the last couple of years. And now that we're going to be tearing up the roads as part of the road project, that's the opportune time for replacing water mains because the road is already torn up and we don't have to tear it up again. And so we're proposing a $1.36 million project to replace some of the water mains on some of the eligible streets for, for road repair. Fire hydrants, we have about 243 of them, about 120 of them need to be replaced or refurbished. So we're looking at doing that. Gate valve replacements, that's part of the water, water main system. When we have a water main break, it's very expensive for us to repair it, and it's also dangerous. And we lose a lot of water because we can't turn off the water in many instances because our gate valves are 80 or 90 years old and they don't work. The gate valves allow us to turn off the water in various sections. So we have a, a project to replace many of those. The sewer retention tank that we have over on 11 Mile and Evergreen, we're under consent decree from Eagle, and we need to make about $500,000 worth of repairs to, to remain in compliance. And then lastly, we have the, the sidewalk and ditch repair programs that, that we've talked about many times in the past. Those programs require some upfront money for the city that will eventually be reimbursed by the residents, and that's, that's taken into account via this, this capital improvement bill as, as well. So all, all told, it's, it's going to come out to around a $7 million project, of which the city needs to finance about $5.1 million. And we're looking at taking out a capital improvement bond, or recommending taking out a capital improvement bond for that work, which is a very flexible bond type, which allows us to work on a variety of, of capital projects, capital improvement projects from, from those funds. It does allow us, it gives us flexibility to move money around from one project to another. And as I said, it's a very flexible option. And again, it's a $5.18 million bond that we're recommending. And the impact to the residents will be the fact that we'll be repaying this bond through the water bill, increasing the water rate slightly. And the theoretical maximum, or the, the worst-case scenario, will be a $9.80 increase per month to the residents. But we are anticipating that it will be significantly lower than that for a variety of factors that I'm not going to get into here, but, uh, that we'll talk about at a future town hall. But basically, there are some variable factors that go into calculating the water rate. And the water rate is recalculated every year, and those factors can be assessed each year and built into the, the component that's used to pay back this, this particular capital improvement bond. But again, worst possible case scenario is $9.81, but it will be lower than that on a per-month basis. So, um, council has a copy of the signed recommendation that was, was made by the infrastructure committee. And the purpose of today is to, to ask council to accept that and approve it. And if that's done, then the next step in the, the process will be that on our January 4th meeting, council would issue a, a notice of intent, which is a formal notification to the, the residents that were considering issuing this bond, at which point the residents would have a 45-day right of referendum. And that's, that's the overview.
So I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation by the infrastructure committee to approve the 2021 capital improvement bond proposal and authorize the bond council and bond financial advisor to move forward as needed for the insurance of unlimited tax general obligations, obligation bonds to be sold in conjunction with the street improvement bonds.
Second.
Been moved to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next, we have the contract with Redstone Architect, Inc. for Police Department Expansion Study.
Hope you're on mute, Cheryl.
Okay, all right. So, if you recall from the November 23rd study session, we had the presentation in regards to the proposed study by Redstone Architects for the redevelopment of the lower level for the use by the police department. And what we have before you is the proposal to accept parts one and two. Part one being for the programming, and part two, the block diagram and conceptual, conceptual floor plan. And that total cost is $9,640. And if you recall, part three, for the building condition, that can be done afterwards. And we'll pick that up after we complete part one and two.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal and contract with Redstone Architects Incorporated for the Police Department Expansion Study, consisting of part one and part two of the proposal in the amount of $7,460, and authorize the mayor or city administrator to sign the related documents.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? I have a question because I, maybe I'm confused because it's saying, yeah, the quote for part one and two is $9,640. We're doing a motion that consists of part one and part two of the, of their proposal, the amount of $7,460.
It looks like I typed it wrong somewhere.
So it should be $9,440, you said?
$9,640.
Okay. To include $9,640.
The $7,460 was for part three. And that should not be the price that's in the motion, the motion should be. So that motion needs to be revised, right, Scott?
Are you addressing me?
Nope, I was addressing the city attorney.
Yeah, I said it needs to be, it needs to be restated.
Okay.
Didn't I just restate it?
Um, you did not do the motion to say.
Okay, uh, let me get that total again, 9,000 what?
640.
Okay, so I'll restate the motion to accept the proposal and contract with Redstone Architects Incorporated for the Police Department Expansion Study, consisting of part one and two of their proposal in the amount of $9,640, and authorize the mayor or city administrator to sign any related documents.
Do I need to second again? Second, I second.
Now it's been moved to second, is there any discussion now? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redstone, we'll be in touch relative to the article.
Okay. Look forward to working with all of you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, be safe.
Next up is going to be a consideration for approval of the independent contractor agreement with CB Studios for LVTV Operations Manager Services.
This begins on page 117 of your packet. And this is for the contract that we have with Jim Nelson through his company, CB Studios, for the operation of the, the cable channel, LVTV. The current two-year agreement expires the end of this year, December 31st. And what you have before you is an agreement for a two-year contract expiring in two years, the end of December 2022. And it can be terminated with seven days' notice on our end. The contract amount is $40,000 a year, and it's more specific relative to the programming that is to be provided.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement, CB Studios for Lathir Village TV Operations Manager Services for a two-year contract ending December 31st of 2022 in the amount of $40,000 per year, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, on page 119 of the contract under compensation, there's, there's an error in there. It says the, the end of this, the second paragraph up from the bottom, it says, "Any approved additional services shall be compensated at the rate of 25." And then parenthetically, it says $30 per hour, so I think it's supposed to be $30. And then on page 122, up at the top, I thought it'd be a little bit more clear if we said, on the very first bullet point, if we said regular monthly programming. Because it gives context to the council meetings, the planning commission, the DDA, and the joint town hall meetings.
Okay.
And other than that, I'm good with it.
And Jim Nelson's on the line, and I'm assuming he does not have any issues with those corrections.
He's fine, thank you.
And I'm, I'm wondering if it should be also for the motion in the amount of $40,000 a year, with, it has something in the motion to say that it's $30 an hour for additional services, or is that not?
Well, it's not, it's not by the hour any longer, so the $40,000 is for the, um, the amount of the events that are shown that are going to be recorded. In case something gets crazy, like, right at this point, we're going to be doing six meetings. Let's say all of a sudden there's 15 meetings, well, the additional meetings would be, you know, put in at, at that hourly rate, just in case there's a crazy amount of events or something that's not forecasted.
Yeah, I think the question was directed probably at Scott, there was whether or not that needs to be in the motion.
Because under, under additional services, it does say meeting outside of the council chambers, which, I guess I need to understand what that means. It's $30 an hour, the operations manager. So I'm thinking, kind of like where we were going when we thought we were going to have to go back in the office before the approval to stay on Zoom, and we were going to set up the meetings in the, um, you know.
As far as going back into the council chambers, this, this contract's fine with that. The, the amount of money would be the same.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking like if we could not, for social distancing, just like how we were about to not be able to be on Zoom anymore, we're going to be going back in the council. Most of what I heard from the council, key members, was about social distancing and maybe having the council meeting done in the, why is that room, uh, community room.
Community room. So my understanding, the way, uh, the part, that falls under part of the regular programming, under scheduled onsite meetings, I guess, so if the, I know it does say, and maybe we could clear, clarify that, where I, I see what you're reading on page 123, that says additional services provided for meetings outside of council chambers. I think that, that should be edited, just be meetings off city hall premise. So if there was a remote meeting, I think that's what Jim is, is asking for, for, to be billed hourly.
Yeah, if you went into the, um, community room, it'd be extremely more expensive than doing a remote or doing a, or doing a, a meeting in the council chambers. I need to know specifications, what would have to be actually done? Cameras, cameras and audio? There's no specification on that at this point.
So if I could add, the thinking behind having the meetings outside of the council chambers as an additional item, as Jim was saying, it would require a different setup. It's not just going in and plugging in the existing equipment and, and the microphones. So it requires an entirely different setup. We don't know if it'll be a combined, combined meeting, so it'll be Zoom and, I guess, onsite. So in light of that, and because we don't know, instead of putting it in the standard contract, it's listed as an additional service.
Oh, to answer your, to specify, if you just wanted to do the remote Zoom meetings in the council chambers, so you'd all be in the one room instead of being in individual rooms, there'd be no change whatsoever.
So I, I'm hoping we're all on the same page, because the whole idea, and the concern from the council members before the Zoom was approved, to go further, was the fact about social distancing.
Right.
I don't want to be in the, the council chambers because we will all be too close to each other. So we thought we would relocate to the community room and have our council meetings there because it allows us to have that space in between us.
Okay.
Though that would be a regular council meeting for us, you're saying that that'll be an additional $30 an hour to be moved to the community room, right?
Correct, if you went in there and you wanted three cameras brought in and the audio brought in to do a meeting in that room, yes, there would be additional. To give you an idea, when CMN did one council meeting down in the community room, they charged $1,900 for the one meeting. A rough estimate to do a meeting down there, again, this is complete, the three cameras, the audio, you know, not Zoom, but, you know, the full consensual, you're probably talking somewhere there around $600, $650. But again, that's an estimate because I need to know, you know, specifically what you need.
So going back to my original question, is that it be in the amount of $40,000 a year? And compensation be $40,000 a year and $30 an hour for meetings outside of the council chamber? That make sense, I'm saying?
Yes, correct. But again, outside the council chambers, are there going to be camera operators? I mean, if it's just me, yes, that, that's the extent of it. But again, if we're going in with camera operators, going into, you know, we don't have the microphones, would have to rent or buy microphones, it's a little bit complex. But yes, basically, it would be, if we just needed me there on top of, you know, being down. But yes, basically it would be, if we just needed me there on top of, you know, being down there, and again, if it's just Zoom, there's no difference at all. If there's something you need to be there for audio, yes, it'd be that plus thirty dollars an hour for audio.
So Scott, do we need to add that to the?
That's my question.
It's, it's very complex.
It's like trying to cut through.
No, it's, it's very complex and there's so many parts to it that fit together. That's why we didn't, I, you know, it was just, there's no specification to put it in the contract. So when that does happen, I will provide the service at a very, very good price for you.
Yeah, yeah, we understand it and we appreciate it, Jim.
And I think, I think the way that the compensation section is written right now allows for that. Um, if any, if any revision, I would just maybe, um, reference under, under that section as identified in the attached exhibit.
So it should be in the amount of forty thousand dollars a year and as identified in the attached exhibit?
Yeah, cause it, it does state, um, any approved additional services shall be compensated at the rate of, like Bruce Comma pointed out, there, uh, when we're fixing that typo, twenty-five and then thirty per hour, and then I would just reference the attached exhibit A.
All right, so I'll, I'll just update my motion to include, uh, the amount of forty thousand dollars uh, and, and as an, and the attached exhibit A, uh, where applicable.
That cool?
Second.
Madam Clerk, you with us?
Yeah, just have one more observation before we go to Madam Clerk.
One sec. Ian, I mean, um, Madam Clerk, did you get the motion?
I did, yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, just a quick observation, so here is, uh, under miscellaneous normal maintenance, can we kind of specify what that is, cause we do have an aging, uh, audio and video equipment? So what is classified as normal maintenance?
Well, normal maintenance, like right now, we have a problem with the playback system, I mean, keeping the computers up and running, um, they like to crash. Um, the editing system, when I took over, didn't work at all. So I got the editing system up and running. Um, the, the, uh, bulletin board likes to, you know, play games once in a while, so that'd be that. Stuff like simple things like your camera, um, camera repairs, cable repairs, maintaining things physically, tripods. But, um, the big thing, the big thing is, is I keep, keeping the computers up and running. With one exception, when it says normal, if it's something like the server crashes, well, I'm not, I can't go in and, and repair a twenty-five thousand dollar server for how, how much money? So it'd just be some, if it was something major, it wouldn't be covered.
Okay, should we specify a bit under normal maintenance?
Uh, anything, uh, anything except for repair of a major component, particularly something like the server. Again, it's like any kind of cable repairs, physical repairs, keeping the, you know, that we had the, a power outage that completely took out the bulletin board. So I had to go in, it took, it took me about six hours to get the bulletin board back up and running again, things like that.
Okay, so what say you, Scott, should we specify there?
Sorry, I'm on mute.
It's all right.
Uh, no, I mean, I think, again, I think it's, for what this agreement is for, I think it's, if there's a major, some sort of major equipment malfunction or, or like Jim said, a server goes down, that's something that's gonna clearly outside the scope of a maintenance contract, especially for, you know, Jim's not a, uh, we didn't hire him, we're not paying him to be a, an IT repair professional, so I think, I think it's probably pretty appropriate, the way it's written.
Yeah, to give you an idea, Ian, about seven years ago, the server did crash, I mean, it was out, the parcel was down, it just was a piece of toast. The factory wanted five thousand dollars to refurb it. I opened it up, took it apart, put everything new, all new fans, um, new, new memory in it and new power supply, cost about six hundred dollars, I completely refurbished it for six hundred dollars compared to like about five thousand dollars. Keep in mind, the servers, the servers run about twenty-five thousand now. So I was able to do a complex repair like that, but it's something where it goes, okay, the server's down, there's no parts for it, or it's gonna be something horrendous. But as far as taking the server apart, rebuilding it, I've done that, that's something within my scope. I pride myself in my, and what I can, the complexity of the repairs that I can do.
Yep, I appreciate it, thank you.
Um, any more discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call please.
Roll call, councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, actually, the question is the contract with Munich Code for meeting and agenda management services.
And this begins on page one twenty-five of your packet, and I sent, um, later this afternoon to cover memo that goes with that. And if you recall, we had the presentation from the representative from Munich Code to go over their agenda and man, meeting and management software. The price, um, is held for four years, it's fifty-four hundred dollars per year, plus on the fifteen hundred dollars for the initial setup, um, the, the DDA has agreed with the cost sharing, I would estimate that'll be about twenty-five percent. And the other, um, part that I would like some feedback from you on is the optional service, which was the video timestamping service, which is an additional twenty-two fifty a year. Cause I noticed during the presentation, there seemed to be a lot of interest in it, but I, I didn't have any direction on if you wanted that included in the annual package.
That was the video timestamp you said?
Yes.
Video, oh, also, it, it just, it just, um, it just confirms everything, um, in case you, why would we need it for? Because you'll have a date on, you'll have a date on every video, right? I mean, every file has a date already.
Right, it time, it done it timestamps it so that, you know, if, if we're on agenda item C, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll click on agenda item C and it'll take them right to that point in the video, so they wouldn't have to scroll through, you know, twenty-five minutes of video to get to item C.
Got it. Well, we know how difficult it is to scroll through these papers, right? So, yeah, okay.
Is that the issue we have now, that we can't scroll through video to identify what's, what's being discussed?
It's convenience.
Okay.
It's a convenience option.
So, um, in front of mine, the, sorry.
Yeah, so let's, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion, Kelly.
Okay.
So, um, make a motion to approve the contract with Munich Code, um, at the quota rate of, uh, fifty-four hundred dollars per year, plus the initial one-time setup of, of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any, uh, discussion?
Yeah, isn't it in, um, uh, parentheses, the amount for, did you say the timestamp as well?
I, I purposely didn't say that, so we can have a discussion about it now and then figure out whether or not we want it, and if so, I'll amend the motion.
Okay, so that, that's my question, are we going to?
And what's the added cost?
Is that, is Cheryl, do you know, is that, is that twenty-two fifty, is, is that per year or is that one time?
It's per year.
Yeah, makes sense, cause I'm sure it's a pretty labor-intensive process for them to do it.
I mean, it's a nice feature, I don't know how critical it is, I, I do think the, um, the software package itself is critical, as it took me four different times to get this package combined Saturday, so um, I, I wasn't as for that cost, if it was a one-time cost, I, it would be more acceptable to me, but as an annual cost, I'm not as enamored with it, but.
Yeah, I, I agree, it would be a, be a great, nice to have, but for twenty-two fifty a year, it seems pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Not, um, I'm sorry. We're not adding that one in there.
It's not in the motion as it stands, correct?
Okay. Um, then, um, roll call, I mean, yeah.
Roll call, councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
And councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have the twenty-twenty-one council meeting calendar.
Yep.
You have in your packet, starting at page one thirty-one, the proposed dates for twenty-twenty-one, I do want to make special note that, um, two of the meetings that were study sessions are now special meetings, they will still start at six PM and that's January fourth, um, to, um, adopt the resolution of intent relative to the bonds and March first.
Thank you, they have a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-one city council meeting schedule.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, what's the special meeting on, on the fourth regarding?
The, the fourth is the notice, the notice of intent, uh, for the capital improvement bond.
I see, okay.
And, and the, uh, March first has become a special, uh, meeting, um, special session because, uh, both of the bonds, uh, well, according to the, the schedule towards getting the bonds, we have to pass another resolution for each bond on March first, uh, to get the bonds, to get the money in time for construction to essentially begin.
Right. So I'm looking at this calendar and, and I don't see any joint meetings with Southfield or Beverly Hills, and I seem to recall we had this joint session with the planning commission where we were kind of tongue-wrestling with the Oakland County Road Commission, which I think was just embarrassing, basically, so what's the move to partner with, with Southfield and Beverly Hills to realize what we really want in Lathir Village?
So which one are you asking, are you asking for schools or are you asking for the roads?
I, you broke up, say again?
Are you asking about the roads in a joint meeting or the school joint meeting?
The roads.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, those, aren't those typically scheduled on somewhat of an ad hoc basis?
Yeah, they are. This, this is something just, this is for the rest of the year and as meetings come, as we all know, then, you know, doodles will be sent out, cause I know there's a doodle that's out there right now about us having a meeting with, um, Jim Nash, and that's not on here either, so meetings will be just added in as we go. But these are just for our, you know, solidifying the first and the third of every month for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, but we are considering joint meetings, correct?
Of course.
Okay.
And I have a question for you, but, um, the second page is a motion to approve city council meeting dates, but it identifies the holidays, is that a separate motion?
No, I just put those on there so that I can remember to not include them on the list on the other page, just, just for me to, so I won't forget them.
All right.
Yeah, the other observation that you guys just brought up, so obviously, we're gonna have, uh, joint meetings with the school board. I guess I should, uh, really ask the question, is it value-add to have, uh, a joint meeting with the Southfield School Board?
So, can we do this one first? And then, I guess we'll discuss that a later, I mean, cause I think that's more, that's something separate than us just approving, getting the, um, dates for the council meeting for twenty-one. That make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Just.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, is there any further discussion? Then we, you did have a motion and everything, right?
Yes, we have a motion and we have a second, yes.
Okay, so can we do the roll call on this?
Yes. Roll call, Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
And councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Motion carry.
Thank you, um, next is the motion to approve the city council meeting dates for twenty-twenty-one. I guess this stuff is kind of.
Make a motion to approve the council meeting dates for twenty-twenty-one?
No, the second?
Wait a minute.
You just did that. Yeah, so you're just moving on to the board of review meeting dates.
I have two, there's one on this side and then there's another one on that side, so I'm sorry, I was going through my packet, I have one that, two, so sorry.
Ignore it.
I, I see now, okay. Moving on to, um, twenty-twenty-one board of review meeting date.
So you have in your packet, starting at page one thirty-three, the, um, resolution to propose the meeting dates for the board of review as identified, um, in that resolution.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one board of review schedule.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
And councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have the appointments to the Lathir Village Community Foundation, and that's due to the bylaws and then one for the store district commission, Robin Roberts, three-year term ending December thirty, twenty twenty-three.
So the first one is for the Lathir Village Community Foundation, they, um, are in the process of changing their bylaws, um, previously, it was either the city administrator or their designee and two council members are changing it to, um, still having the city administrator or their designee and one council member. So what we would need from you is your motion relative to, to the appointments to the community foundation board, and I have designated, um, Pam again as my designee. I didn't agree to that.
So are you so, well, nevermind, I'll say it later, um, so are you saying that I get to do one or the council gets to do one? So they don't, it doesn't have to be? Nevermind, I'm gonna answer my question, so who would like?
Be one council person as a.
I got it, I finally just kind of worked it through my brain, so who would like to be on it?
I would love to be, but I'm not volunteering between planning commission and infrastructure, I'm already working a full-time job.
The name is on it, okay, so, uh, um, so do we have to make this decision now?
Well, I'll think about it, yeah, I'll think about.
So we have to be speaking today, like on, during this particular, uh, motion?
You say you do?
Yes.
Oh, why?
Well, I'll stay on it tentatively, because, uh, this is like, so we can move on. Who would like to make the motion?
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Pam Brachi as the designee of the city administrator to the Lathir Community Foundation Board, as well as Kelly Garrett, uh, as the council representative.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call, councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you, except we will have the store district commission.
And this is for the appointment to the term that expires the end of this year of Robin Roberts, and it's a three-year term and Robin Roberts has, um, reapplied. So this would be for the term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to reappoint to the Lathir Village Historical District Commission, Robin Roberts, for the three-year term. the three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any um discussion? Harry, none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett? Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
And Councilmember Stalings?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Um, so next we have a resolution racism as a public health crisis.
This was a resolution where you received the draft at the previous study session. And those changes were made, and now you have the resolution before you for your adoption.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion? Oh, we don't have you. It's doesn't have that motion, right, Scott?
Scott, I'm trying to print. I can't hear. Could you say that again?
It doesn't need a motion for the to accept the proclamation, right?
No, not for a proclamation.
Thank you. Um, you'll send that around to all of us to sign it, and that uh proclamation is um I'm not gonna read it all. I think I read it at the last last one. So um, thank you for correcting it, and we'll get it around for everybody to be um assigned. So next up is a closed set session. And um, are we going to different? Or are you gonna do it the way that we discussed and tried to do rooms?
I don't see it as an option on my screen to do.
I get you put me as host, I can do it.
I would have to get Steve Schwartz to sign into this meeting.
I'm gonna take a moment to say, have a good rest of your meeting. Happy holidays.
Are you just gonna bail?
I don't need to be part of your closed session, so.
Happy holidays.
We're coming back. Go ahead. Um, the reports, what's commissions and committees?
Well, you want me to come back? I'll stay. If you want me to stay, I'll stay.
I'm just kidding. Have a good night.
All right. Thanks, guys. Happy New Year. Be safe. Stay healthy.
You too.
You too.
Talk to you later.
Well, I would recommend, Kelly, I'd recommend going into the separate one for for Ebet's purposes of keeping the the recording for a year and a day. So uh we'll need a motion of a specific motion that as it's presented in the agenda packet to go into closed session.
Okay, and that's what's on, just repeating exactly what number twelve says.
Correct.
And everybody has the uh other film link.
I can find it.
It was the one you tried to go into earlier?
No, that said, that said you were busy. Yeah. Okay.
All right, I'll I'll make a motion to to go into closed session in accordance with section eight C of Michigan Open Meetings Act, M C L fifteen dot two sixty-eight to consider strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the nego connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. Uh, if either negotiating party, I'm not sure how that sentence reads, but I'll read it as is.
And Dan already seconded, there has, there doesn't have to be a um discussion, right?
Correct.
You all in the next meeting.
Be in a minute. I'll make a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Okay, do we need to do roll call again, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
I would.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, Councilmember Ferguson?
Present, Oakland County, Lathrow Village.
Mayor Garrett?
President of Oakland County, Lathrow Village, Michigan.
You don't have to do the vocation again.
It'd be in the Kaski, I don't know.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Present.
Councilmember Stalings?
Present, uh Oakland County, Lathrow Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna take up at a city administrator report.
Okay, um well, as you already know, we have the closed session today. And also to remind you that January fourth will be a special meeting um for the approval of the notice of intent resolution for the capital improvement bonds. And we've now added the tentative agreement with the P O A M and um C O A M, the our police unions. We have some staff changes. Um Susan Schultz, who was at the front desk, her last day in the office will be this Wednesday, December twenty-third. And we're looking to temporarily fill that position until we can do some restructuring of roles and responsibilities here. And also wanted to let you know that uh Rami has indicated he has accepted the offer to be our full-time code enforcement um officer, and that would be starting January eleventh. We also um did some reconfigurations of the front office um so that we could accommodate three desks. One of the things that Myosha had strongly suggested is that people not share desks and telephones. So we're trying to make that to accommodate the three people who would be there. And City Hall remains um closed daily from twelve-thirty to one-thirty P M. So that we can have um people take lunch at the same time and have um coverage of the front office. Will be closed for the holidays, December um twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, as well as the thirty-first and January first for the um Christmas and New Year's holidays. Let's see. Oh, Michigan Municipal League, um they issued a press release um in regards to the um Community Builder Award. They presented to me, and there's a video on podcast related to that.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Oh, COVID took away your 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 moment in the sun, damn COVID.
Well, the the fun part was they've got to cut and paste because um my acceptance speech really took a few tries.
I hear you.
Solar lining.
The Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, Jim Nash, he's extended an invitation to meet with all of us sometime between January nineteenth and February seventeenth. And I sent a doodle poll to each of you, so hopefully get that back to me um the later than Wednesday, so we can go ahead and confirm a date with him. The R F P for the House in the Woods Realtor, um that's already to be issued tomorrow. I sent a draft to you as well. Um, the police department, we're very proud. They had a um certification from the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police and Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission for being in compliance with the U S Department of Justice's standards for certification on the use of force and safe policing for communities. The copies of those policies were um sent to you separately. Three officers completed the sergeant's exam, and Officer Mike Tackett will be promoted. And another um accolades for the police department, because Chief Scott has really been the one um making certain everything was submitted. And the CARES Act reimbursement from Oakland County for us was a little over a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is.
And the D D A, they have um been sending out the landlord licenses for those who own um local property to make certain they are complying with our our licensing and renewal policies. Their next meeting is going to be for the D D A is January fifteenth at twelve noon. They've invited several of the D D A members to participate in these recovery planning workshops that are offered by National Main Street. And one of our local merchants, um Kador at Kabak Kabak has donated thirty ten-dollar gift certificates to the police department to distribute to residents. And they also, uh Main Street um awarded us with a Flagstar grant of about fifteen hundred dollars to enhance the gateway entrances with lighting and landscaping. We've received an application from a company that wants to start a COVID nineteen testing clinic that will be a drive-through situation right here on Southfield Road next door. Essentially, it'll be by appointment only. And the B P um gas station is moving forward. With their um process, they have obtained a building permit. The planning commission's next meeting is scheduled for January nineteenth. Um, they've started the capital improvement planning process. Recreation, we're very happy. It's just announced that they've um pulled together with um the mayor, a M L K program. We're trying to figure out how to do something when you can't, you know, congregate. So there will be a community experience journal, as well as a fun uh food drive for um lighthouse. And the spring classes are now open for registration. There'll be a mix of um virtual and in-person. And I included um some information that we received from the Southfield Public Schools, which includes a link to an app they now have, which announces um whatever they have going on in terms of notifications, calendars, and their news feed that you might find of interest. That concludes my report.
Well.
Do um, can I have, may I ask a question? The the gas station, the B P gas station, what you what is their um? What are their plans?
Well, they were converting the Verizon building into the gas station.
Right.
So I know they were waiting on um some authorizations from the state relative to the um the tanks that would be here. So let's, beyond that, I would have to check with Susie on any additional details.
Okay, okay, I've got you two two questions about it, two different. Okay. So they're waiting on some some um clearances or some um some permission or something for the tanks and all of that that has to go.
Right, there's a an extensive process with the state relative to the placement or even removal of those tanks.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anything else, Cheryl? Okay, um, city attorney?
Um, I don't really have much. I just wanna say, I I think you guys, everyone, staff and council, deserves a good pat on the back. This has been a challenging year with uh and you guys have really adapted and and been very productive in in light of of the situation. So so my other communities just pretty much shut down everything and and decided they weren't gonna continue being a city and providing services to their residents. So um, or at least that's what it seemed like. But you guys have done a great job, and I think uh it's worth, like you said, a pat on the back. So hopefully uh two thousand and twenty-one is a much better year in terms of what normal looks like. But but you guys have really done a great job. So I just wanna congratulate you on that and and wish everyone a happy holiday.
I really appreciate that. I do.
Um, reports uh of boards, commissions, committees, I think you heard the infrastructure committee.
Yeah, no nothing to report that I haven't already covered on the infrastructure for the planning commission. Uh, we had our meeting on December fifteenth, and uh we held the public hearing for uh the R one district amendment, uh parking is a special land use, which uh will allow in certain instances uh the first residential home to be converted into a parking lot to um to allow for uh more substantial uh building construction on Southfield Road. Uh, we didn't have any any uh comments, so that will move forward to council uh at some point in the future. Uh, we also reviewed and approved the site plan for uh what was Residential Staffing Services, which is the uh building just north of Sunnybrook on the west side, basically kitty corner to my house. Uh, give you a picture of where it is. Um, that that one, that site plan was approved with uh certain uh stipulations. And I think one of them is going to be that he's going to uh come to council uh seeking a variance uh for the uh required wall uh between uh the the public alleyway and the uh first resident residential home. So um so I I think we'll be hearing from him probably at the next possible meeting, uh because he was looking to get going with his with his with his site uh as quickly as possible. So um, and then we just approved the uh calendar of of regular meetings for for the upcoming year, and that was it.
Thank you. Um, any other boards, commissions, committee? Is there any unfinished business?
Um, I just have one one question under like that category. So um, I think we all know there was a fire in one of the J M C buildings, and if you were like me, you probably have the exact same reaction. Well, that's no surprise. So I guess a a couple of questions. One is is first, do we know uh what caused the fire? And uh two, um, you know, should this be lighting a fire, no pun intended, on underneath us to um, you know, get those buildings in compliance? Because we know there are a lot of things that were identified, and you know, this is this is this is a risk, so.
Yes. From the early reports, it appears that it was related to the H vac system, although it took the fire department some time to even determine what the source was. Um, that is one of the many things that have already been identified in the building by the building official and the inspectors. So there are ongoing conversations nudging them along as strongly as we can um without actually citing them. Although I think the building official is probably ready for that. We just received another FOIA request from them for the past lawsuit relative to those properties. So anything we do is is been challenging. But I don't know, Scott wants to lay in on the the legal ramifications of what we're doing.
Yeah, and again, it it continues to be um an ongoing process with with that entity. I I did take a look. It looks like it was a a faulty furnace filter or burned-up furnace filter that was the cause of the fire per the fire inspector's report. So um I guess for the purposes of this meeting, what I could say is that we're, we continue to to move forward in in getting them closer to that compliance. It's it's like I said, it's it's a process.
Okay.
Anything else, Rose? Okay. Um, public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes, please. I don't think that we have anybody from the public here.
No.
Okay, um, mayor and council's comments. Um uh I have to second what uh Scott said. This year has been um a whirlwind. And if anyone follows my life, you know that this is probably even um crazier. Uh, one minute you're up, next minute you're down. One minute you're getting married, next thing everyone around you is either um passing away or, you know, um so this has been a a very uh traumatic year for me personally, but also I know for us as a community, we lost um some residents that have been here for um forever. And um just to know that we're going into the new year without them also. I think that we also did a really good job of um of stop, what's the phrase, stop, drop, and rolling with the punches. Um, as in our first closed-door meeting on Zoom, that went very easy, I see. Um, you know, still a work in progress. I honestly pray that we are able to stay um in this arena um for a while. Cheryl, did you see if it passed yet? Or Scott, do you know if the pass is gonna stay this way until March two thousand and twenty-one?
I haven't seen um, but I also haven't checked this week, so I'm not sure.
It was it was to her for a signature.
Okay. Okay, um, I also um hope that everybody this year um and going forward stays safe. Um, I know that it is um up near about immunizations, you know, do what's best for you and do what, you know, do the research. That's it for me. And I know that Ian, you had, I forgot, I almost forgot, because I was gonna close this puppy out.
That's okay.
Got a question about the schedule.
Yeah, the schedule. So um, I didn't see anything on there regarding um Veterans Day or anything we're gonna do regarding Veterans Day. And I was thinking, maybe we should at least put it on the list to kind of recognize the fact that we we do recognize veterans within the city. And even if we need to do taps, whether it's We do recognize veterans within the city and even if we need to do taps, whether it's. Raising or lowering the, the Union Jack, I think we should try to honor that. It doesn't have to be anything gigantic like Southfield has always done, but something just to. You know. Pass the, the time, pass the, you know, recognize that it is Veterans, Veterans Day and we have a memorial in the park. So I think we should seriously consider that.
So, um, I hear you, what you're, you're saying. That what we just did for accepting the motion for council meetings. Council meetings that are mandated by our charter, which is the first Monday, first and third Monday. And I think it was just showing also the reasons. The, the holidays on the second page was just showing the reasons of any adjustments in our meetings not being on the first or the third. So it has nothing to do with anything else regarding. Our joint meetings, anything that we would do for Veterans Day or any, even Martin Luther, I think Martin Luther King's Day is in there, but it doesn't specify what we're doing for that either. So. It was strictly to establish what our twenty twenty one actual date schedule is in correspondence with the first and third Mondays. That's all. But, but I think it's a great idea and you should know where I'm going with this, that something together. Um, so, um, the committee of one or however many you would like to, uh. Put on there, I would help you also, um, to put something together for Veterans Day. I do think that that is a really good idea.
Okay, let me figure something out.
I know you will.
Yep, try it. I've got two quick things. One, just to piggyback on what Scott and Kelly said, uh, I'm, I'm glad we continue to move forward and a result of that, we're going to see a lot of positive changes over the next three years. In our infrastructure, the way the city looks, um, we got a code enforcer that started to make some, some headway and now we've got them back. Um, that's just a lot of great positive things to come after a really, really crappy year. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention is encourage people, council members as well. Uh, to do your home water test or your home water, uh, service line test to determine what kind of material you have. You know, every, every resident that, that does that test saves the city money because if, if a resident doesn't do it, we have to send somebody out to their house. Uh, for something that a resident can, can very easily do just by following a, a few steps. So. We need to get those identifications. So it's a real easy process. I was the first guinea pig. It took me less than two minutes to do the whole thing. Um, so if you need information on how to, how to do it, just go to the website. There's information out there that, that gives you the link to the process that even, we even made it even more simple. If you've got your phone. You can take a picture of the QR code and it'll immediately take you to where you need to be. So. Um, you'll be hearing a lot about that. We'll keep reminding people, uh, but, but go ahead and do it. We'd appreciate it. And, and have a happy holiday.
Yep. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, same here. Just, just wanted to wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and. And just thankful to see everyone. I know you can't see me right now, but I see you. It's always wonderful. It's a, it's just beautiful to see one another now and, and God bless your families and. I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to you all. And to our Lathir Village residents, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Well, everyone have a happy holiday and, um, God willing, we'll see everyone in twenty twenty one. Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So have a good.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Take care. Happy New Year.